Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the September 4th, 2012 Waschuggul City Council Meeting. I ask that you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Bogerts.
Present.
Councilmember Plinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Greenlee.
Here.
Councilmember Lindsay. Councilmember McDaniel.
Here.
Councilmember Schumaker.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
We did receive a note from Councilmember Lindsay that she may be just a few minutes late this evening. Before we get into the rest of the agenda and before any tones go off and send some people other directions, I would like to deviate from the agenda just for a moment. We had a -- have an employee who went above and beyond and not so much outside of his area of expertise, but certainly outside of the jurisdiction of the community in a life-saving effort recently. I'll read a little bit of information from Fire Chief Swinhardt's email and press release. "Off-duty Kamus Waschuggul firefighter assists in saving man's life at Disneyland." Kamus Waschuggul firefighter, EMT Ben Porter, who is actually one of our youngest hires, most recent hires, was on a family vacation at Anaheim's Disneyland on August 18th. While returning to the Disneyland Hotel around 2:30 in the afternoon, Mr. Porter noticed a man who appeared to be convulsing being lowered to the ground by a police officer and another individual. Porter ran to the victim's aid and upon realizing the subject was not breathing and had no pulse, began CPR while a police officer called for assistance. Shortly thereafter, a Disneyland nurse arrived with an automatic defibrillator while at the same time an off-duty paramedic stopped to assist. Mr. Porter operated the defibrillator while the paramedic continued CPR. After delivering one shock from the defibrillator, Porter and the nurse noticed that the patient had a pulse. At about the same time, the Anaheim Fire Department and a local ambulance arrived to transport the patient. Subsequent reports indicate that the patient had a complete recovery and was discharged from the hospital 24 hours later. Kamus Waschuggul Fire Department is extremely proud of the actions of firefighter EMT Ben Porter, which were beyond the call of duty. His actions are a reflection of the outstanding service he continues to provide to the citizens of Kamus and Waschuggul. With that, Ben, would you please come forward? Chiefs, would you come up?
Happiest place honored.
This is a certificate of recognition presented to Ben Porter. The city of Waschuggul recognizes the outstanding actions taken by off-duty firefighter EMT Ben Porter while on a family vacation on August 18th taking upon a man not breathing and without a pulse. Mr. Porter's attention and swift actions saved a man's life. Presented this 24th -- or this fourth day of September 2012.
Congratulations.
I think the mayor's said it all. We're extremely proud of Ben. There's not a lot of people -- personally, I think there's quite a lot of people, whether they be police officers or off-duty firefighters, would necessarily do what Ben would do. And sometimes it's justifiable. I mean, sometimes people are legitimately concerned about things like liability and so forth, but Ben didn't even stop and think about that for a second and jump in. It just looks right for that. We're extremely proud of him.
One other thing, as tradition in the firehouse, that if you get your picture in the paper, you owe ice cream. So that's where you have to do the store after here.
I might just buy all pop and ice cream.
I did not see Don taking pictures yet.
Oh, it was a big article in today's paper.
Oh, my paper comes late when school starts. Ben, anything from yourself? Do I understand that somebody didn't think that he was really even having a heart attack?
Oh, I don't know. I don't want to make anybody look bad at that point, but it was -- I kind of had to step over the police officer. I don't -- his train of thought, I think he thought it was more of a heat-related issue and ended up being more of a cardiac issue. So I kind of just didn't pay attention to him and he was doing it and I was doing it and he went along with it luckily and put me in handcuffs, so. But, you know, I'm trained to be able to recognize that kind of a situation and just goes to show you that early CPR and using the ED early can really make a difference in that kind of situation, so. That's all it comes down to. I'm sure most of us would have done it, so.
Thank you again. That's awesome.
Those are wonderful things to hand out. It is unfortunate the circumstance that was there, but luckily the right person was there and I echo the chief's comments. We certainly have done a good job hiring some folks in there. Okay, let the record show that Councilmember Lindsay is now present for the meeting. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, do we have any correspondents?
No.
With that, we will go for our first opportunity for any members of the public that would like to address council to step forward to the microphone. Martha, don't be shy. You know I move on.
I know this is meeting number two. I'm about to go to meeting number three this evening since we missed the holiday. I'm -- I have my ECFR Commissioner hat on right now just to invite you all to our 9/11 ceremony, which will be Tuesday, September 11th. We have two events. One starts at 5:30 and that is a spaghetti feed that's sponsored by the Volunteers Association and it's by donation. So if you come and you're hungry and you don't have any money, we'll still feed you, but we'd appreciate a donation. It's for their group, their organization. And then at 8 o'clock, we start our ceremony. And we have luminary lights, as many as there are people that were lost, that were firefighters at Ground Zero. And also, the names will be read. And we have one of two events occurring. We're trying -- I'm trying to figure out which one it is. We were going to have bagpipers. Now it seems like we're going to have bell ringers do music and probably Amazing Grace. But we invite you all. We'd love to have you there. It's a wonderful, beautiful ceremony, very touching, very moving, in the evening. So it's very nice. So thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Dave, good evening.
How are we doing? I don't know if that's right. I see you got two public comments spots, so I don't know if I'm in the right one or...
Either one works fine.
So, as I see you're on your agenda, you've got to give your name. My name's Dave Ritchie, PO Box 63 Waschuggul. I'm actually the Business Manager, Secretary of Treasure for Labor's Local 335. I'm here in support of Local 307, but I see they didn't make it tonight, so. Here to ask about the city water issue, what's going on with that? As far as, I know there was a bunch of members here last meeting, I guess it was, I couldn't make it, so.
The council did approve, on a split vote, approved the -- basically myself signed an agreement with the contracting company to go forward with the study on the water and sewer system.
So it's a done deal that you're going to contract it out?
No.
Oh, it's not?
No, this is just an assessment.
Okay, okay.
A little $45,000 little...
Yeah, well, I mean...
Public service agreement to do an assessment of the system itself.
Yeah, and I know you're, you know, you're here to save money as council members and everything, but, I mean, these employees actually live in town, most of them, I believe. I know some of them personally. We've had issues with other stuff in the Vancouver area, as you know. Vancouver, they call it the bedroom community. Basically, people live there, they work across the river. I mean, my opinion is, and I know Local 307, is they'd like to see the work stay here in the community and the people that live here. You know, you guys support that, so basically, I just, that's all I wanted to ask you of how things were going, so.
Yeah, at this point, we've started the, well, at least put out the contract. I believe it's due back late October-ish, hopefully somewhere in that area.
They started work.
I would also want to be clear that the private-public partnership was one item on the to-do list of each. And in my mind, it's not what this is as much about. You know, we've got big rate increases in water.
Yeah, I'm paying those too.
And we're trying to turn over everything to see if there's any way that we can save any money. And so a whole lot of this is to kind of look over the shoulder of a much bigger study that was done by FCS several years ago on rates and especially what we need for capital improvements. So at least in my mind, a big piece of this thing, the PPP piece is small compared to the total contract.
So that's a total water system for the whole city, the...
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer, water plants, everything. I mean, the contractor, obviously, he's in it to make money too, so.
Yeah, at this point, the group that's doing the study won't be one of them that's bidding on any contract if that should come forward in the end of it throughout the assessment or that type of stuff either, so. It's kind of a, trying to make sure that the two hands don't actually shake with each other.
So I just, I'd like to see it stay.
Understood.
Thank you.
Let's, Dave, I know we talked real briefly last week. Let's go ahead and find a time to set up some time chat.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Any other members of the public that would like to address council? Okay, not your final opportunity. Consent agenda this evening consists of four items. Our council minutes of August 20th, 2012, workshop minutes of August 27th, 2012, our regular accounts payable claims in the amount of $292,495.87, and Agenda Bill 5512, an authorization of the mayor to sign the final plat for Colorado Ridge, also known as Columbia Ridge. Counsel, could you...
Yes.
Would you pull Item B, the workshop minutes from 27th August, for discussion, please?
Mm-hmm. Any other items?
Mr. Mayor, with that modification, I ask unanimous consent that the consent agenda be approved as read.
Mayor, I'd agree with that, but I'd just like to state for the record that the handling of the city of Vancouver is nothing I was involved in with Vancouver.
Hearing no objection, the other three items, Items A, C, and D, are adopted. Item number B, our workshop minutes of August 27th, 2012. Dave?
And my apologies for not getting to Rose earlier on this. On the council comments, on my comments about the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7th line down, it says that Chief Swinhardt will assume the emergency management duties for the newly consolidated department, and that should be Deputy Chief Schumacher. That's the sum total of the amendment. Hard to tell you guys apart these days.
And with that change, do I have a motion to adopt your workshop minutes?
So move.
I've got a motion and a second to adopt the minutes of the August 27th, 2012 workshop. Any further council comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda Bill 5612, public hearing regarding medical marijuana and collective gardens moratorium extension. Mitch?
Are we skipping the Columbia Ridge?
That was under consent.
Oh, it was. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, you all, I hope, have this in your Dropbox. I will walk through it, apologize to the audience members. As you're aware, under federal law, marijuana is classified as a schedule-one drug within the Controlled Substance Act. And this means that possession, growing, and distributing of it, and knowingly facilitating the above, even for medical use, is considered a violation of federal law regardless of state statutes preventing such use. In state law, in 1998, Washington State voters approved Initiative 692, which decriminalized possession and limited use of medical marijuana for patients who are under a physician's care and who suffer from terminal or debilitating illness. In 2007, the law was expanded to allow patients to receive assistance from designated providers, and it broadened the definitions and conditions that medical marijuana could be prescribed for. The state legislature passed Senate Bill 5073 in 2011, which was mostly due to a concern of lack of safe and sufficient medical marijuana for patients. And it put into place a state structure to license and regulate medical marijuana and establish the ability to perform collective gardens. Without regulations in place regarding collective gardens and a desire not to violate federal law, council adopted and extended our existing present moratorium. Now, Initiative 502 is slated to be on the ballot this November. And according to the attempted Attorney General for the state of Washington in the ballot measure summary, this measure would remove state law prohibitions against producing, processing, and selling marijuana subject to licensing and regulation by the Liquor Control Board, allow limited possession of marijuana by persons age 21 and over, and impose 25% excise taxes on wholesale and retail sales of marijuana, earmarking revenue for purposes that include substance abuse prevention, research, education, and healthcare. Laws prohibiting driving under the influence would be amended to include maximum thresholds for THC blood concentration. Out of concern that Senate Bill 5073 was in direct conflict with existing federal law and mandated involvement of state employees, Governor Gregoire requested a legal opinion from the United States Department of Justice. James Cole, Deputy Attorney General, stated, "Persons who are in the business of cultivating, selling, or distributing marijuana, and those who knowingly facilitate such activities are in violation of the Controlled Substance Act regardless of state law." In response, in the governor's partial veto of Senate Bill 5073, she stated, "The United States attorneys have made it clear that state law would not provide these individuals safe harbor from federal prosecution, meaning state employees. No state employee should be required to violate federal criminal law in order to fulfill duties under state law." In addition, she said, "Absent congressional action, state laws will not protect an individual from legal action by the federal government." To that end, City Council, Waschuggul City Council, adopted Ordinance 1706, Emergency Ordinance adopted under Y-18 of 2011. We extended that moratorium for 12 months under Ordinance 1710. And that ordinance is set to expire on September 6th, 2012, next couple days. Proposed ordinance before you now is to extend the adopted moratorium an additional six months, and it recognizes the contradiction between federal and state law, and it acknowledges that a work plan will be developed in light of the outcome of Initiative 502. The recommended action is to hold a public hearing to take public testimony. If council desires to make a motion to read the ordinance by title only and pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Thank you, Mitch. With that, I will open the public hearing and ask for any individuals that would like to speak either for or against the issue of medical marijuana collective gardens to please step forward to the microphone. Second call for any members of the public that wish to address council in regards to Good evening.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Wayne M. Davis. I'm a Vietnam veteran.
Wayne, could we get your address, please?
Huh?
Could we get your address, please?
Yeah, 332 Sixth Street, here in Waschuggul. I've lived in the area for almost my entire life. During my Vietnam career, I flew in a H-1 Cobra gunship during the Vietnam War for four and a half tours in Vietnam. During my tours, I became affected with Agent Orange and also other fatalities that have caused me to lose almost my eyesight. If it wasn't for the marijuana, medical marijuana, I would not be living today, okay? My doctors, and you know, I have federal doctors, and they are backing me 100% too because I proved to them that by using the medical marijuana, I have been able to continue to live in society and a better cause. And they're finding out now today that PTSD victims, and I'm one of them as well because of the marijuana, has calmed me down. I'm not the radical person I used to be a few years ago. When I first got out of the service, I couldn't be around people, nobody. And through the program of the VA, and I've been with through the VA, I work with them on a regular basis, and I help other vets as well, you know, to teach them that there is other ways other than being violent all the time. And you know, I don't know if you people know anything about PTSD, but you know, that's flashbacks from war. And it can happen to any vet at any given time, some more than others. Now, and I know in my time in Vietnam that a lot of people were killed because of what I was flying, and I had no control over that, but it doesn't seem to work that way. You know, those nights I'd go, some nights even if I didn't have the marijuana, it's hard for me to sleep at night. I wake up screaming. I've had people tell me that I had a psych, he's a PhD in psychology at the VA Hospital. He said he's been with the VA for 39 years studying patients with PTSD, and he said he'd never heard of a person having such a violent PTSD as mine. You know, I live in this community, I don't cause no problems. I grow a little bit of weed for my own personal use. I do not give a shit to nobody. The only people I would give a shit to is if they had a card and they'd show it to me. And I have a card, I carry it with me all the time, and I'm willing to give it, to show it to anybody in here at any given time if they want to see what it looks like. You know, we don't bother people. Most of us that use it, but I know there's some that are bad. I know there's some in this community that abuse that privilege, you know, and then people need to be taken care of. Them are the ones that, you know, if they're growing any more than 15 plants in their possession, and they got more than 24 ounces in their given possession of, that are allotted amount, then they need to be taken hold and, you know, put in jail, whatever it takes. You know, I'm willing to back 100%. If I saw somebody, if I ran across them and they're growing way too many plants, I'd tell them. Because I, you know, I've just done enough for myself. And one other, one other person that lives in my house also has a card, and he's as bad as I am. He's a vet. This man can hardly move. Every muscle in his back is messed up. He's got injuries that are just horrendous from Vietnam, and the weeds helped him settle down, be able to sleep at night. Instead of taking Vicodin and, I don't know, about some of these other drugs, you know, that are real bad, you start thinking about them, Oxycodone and that, what was you going to have your kids on? Oxycodone or weed? And I guarantee you, you can look in all the stats anywhere in this government, and you'll see why a lot of these states are turning over to legalizing it because of one thing. Have you ever seen anybody die on marijuana? I've seen a lot more people die on alcohol driving out on these roads than I've ever seen anybody on pot. And I'll be honest with you, I've been smoking it before the law came into effect, before marijuana cards were available. I had smoked it for over 30 years, and that's what's kept me alive. I had glaucoma that was active from cancer in Vietnam, and my doctors tell me today that it's in recession because of what I've been doing, following by their rules, even though that they're federal doctors, they're saying, "Go out and get your marijuana card. We'll back you 100%. We'll give you the information for you to go get it." And that's what I did. Soon as it came available here in Washington State, I got it. I had one in Oregon, I was going to Oregon, smoking it over there. But, you know, if you look at it, it's helped me, and I'm grateful for it. And if they took it away from me, I'd probably die anywhere. But I guarantee you, I want to live another 20 years, and I want to enjoy the community. I love this community. My dad, my mom grew up up here, just not too far from here, just a little bit east up there around the middle of the Gorge. And we've had, we've had land in this area in our families for over 100 years. So, you know, I'm the last one, I got my brother living with me. He's got no job, you know, he just lives with me because he's got a place to come to, you know, and I have one sister left, and she lives in Southern Cal. She teaches handicapped kids. And we, like I said, we've been here for, our families over the years, they've been here for over 100 years, and, you know, we love this place, and this is where I want to die. I don't want to die anywhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you for your service as well. Certainly don't have any trepidation that any action on this moratorium will affect your personal use and what you have personally at home just for yourself, so. And again, thank you for your service and sharing your experience with us. Is there any other members of the public that would wish to address the issue of the medical marijuana collective gardens? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, your action?
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the ordinance by title only.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. An ordinance continuing an emergency moratorium for six months within the city of Waschuggul on the establishment, location, operation, licensing, maintenance, or continuation of medical marijuana collective gardens or dispensaries asserted to be authorized or actually authorized under E2SSB 5073, Chapter 181, laws of 2011, Chapter 69.51A, Revised Code of Washington, or any other laws of the state of Washington.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. Any council discussion?
I have a question of staff.
I was just Googling polling on Initiative 502, and it appears that pretty much all the
polls show it passing statewide. Do we have any plans, any contingency plans if it does pass? What are we going to do?
Well, I think that that would be the work plan portion of it, is that we've already done some initial work of looking at ordinances and how we would regulate it, but ordinance development and land use criteria and regulations would have to be set up and established to see how it would play out. We're still somewhat not answering the question at the federal level, and that may still be problematic for, it is problematic for staff to write code that violates federal law. It may be whatever the will of the council is at that time as well, depending on what we do.
How quickly would it go into effect after passage? Would it be first of the year, would it be...
I would assume that that is, it would go into effect the first of the year.
I'm curious, if indeed code were developed and brought forth to council for approval, would council not also be culpable at that point regarding passage of city code?
Potentially, yes. That's exactly what we hear, and that's what the state, or, excuse me, the United States Attorney General was alluding to.
Thank you.
Depending on what happens with 502, that would certainly be something for Don and the Attorney General's office to be advising a whole lot of communities throughout the state. I think it'd probably be fair as well, I know Mitch is optimistic, I would say on the second to the last slide, on the proposed ordinance is that it acknowledges that a work plan may be developed in light of the outcome of Initiative 502. I know we've seen things even on the federal level that certainly we thought that something would solve everything, and things have fallen apart, so.
Well, I have some ideas that when we... Well, I have some ideas that when we're looking at the initial, other, the current law, Vancouver was looking at that, where, of course, they passed a moratorium too, but short of that, we were, there are some ideas that we have to share with you.
And I'm aware of those.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's pretty good collaboration throughout the county.
Yes, it's an item of discussion in all the planners, yeah.
Any other discussion from counsel? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Takes us to Agenda Bill 5712, adopting an ordinance regarding emergency management amending Waschugul municipal code 2.48.090 regarding the mayor's authority during a declared emergency. Don?
I'll take that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, in 2006, the city along with other jurisdictions made substantial updates in its emergency management ordinances. The city of Waschugul established those rules under Ordinance Number 1544. Included in the issues addressed was the ability of the mayor to issue emergency orders during declared emergency. Among the types of emergency orders specified was the ability to issue an order under WMC 2.48.090F requiring the discontinuance of the sale, distribution, or giving away of firearms and/or ammunition for firearms in any or all parts of the city. Waschugul municipal code subsection H requiring the closure of any and all business establishments where firearms and/or ammunition for firearms are sold or otherwise dispensed. And Waschugul municipal code 2.48.0907I prohibiting the carrying or possession of firearms or any instrument which is capable of producing bombing harm which is carried or possessed with intent to use the same to cause such harm, with exception of peace officers and military personnel. Recent review of state statutes brings a concern about the ability of local municipalities to regulate firearms in an emergency based on RCW 9.41.290 which preempts this field. The state statutes reference states that the state of Washington fully occupies and preempts the entire field of firearm regulation within the boundaries of the state, including the registration, licensing, possession, purchase, sale, acquisition, transfer, discharge, and transportation of firearms, or to any other element relating to firearms or parts thereof, including ammunition and reloading components. Cities, towns, and counties or other municipalities may enact only those laws or ordinances relating to firearms that are specifically authorized by state law in RCW 9.41300 and are consistent with this chapter. Statute should be read with RCW 43.06.220 which grants the emergency powers authorized by the state of Washington to the governor. RCW 43.6.220E and G gives the governor the power to restrict possession of firearms and restrict the sale, dispersment, or dispensing of firearms and ammunition. It is therefore recommended that the city of Waschugul municipal code be amended to repeal Waschugul municipal code 2.48.090FH and I to come into compliance with state law that has preempted the city from regulating firearms in an emergency. The recommended action is to read the ordinance by title only, repealing Waschugul municipal code 2.48.090FH and I, and then followed by pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the ordinance by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
An ordinance repealing portions of the Waschugul municipal code relating to the mayor's authority to prohibit the sale and possession of firearms in declared emergency.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Second. I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. Counsel, discussion. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is carried. Takes us to Agenda Bill 5812, adopting a resolution recognizing first responders.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. If I might, I would defer to Councilman Shoemaker, who asked once again that we bring this resolution forward if you wanted to make some comments, but the recommended action is to read the resolution by title only, and then to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. And it is, I think, the second year now that we would be, you would be passing a resolution recognizing and commending our first responders here in Waschugul and the value that they add in our community.
Dave?
Thank you very much. I would like to just add one comment. We do this every year, and every year it seems more important. Tonight, we saw an example of the types of people we have in these first responder positions. These are great people, and I think it's appropriate that we recognize them. They get little enough recognition, and most of their job is pretty routine, but on occasion it gets pretty dicey for them, and I think it's appropriate that we recognize that. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Jimper?
Hi, I have a request. I would really like to see the entire resolution read, not just title only, out of respect for the men and women who are so important in their positions. I just think that that would be appropriate.
Would you like to make that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to read the ordinance in its entirety.
Second. I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution recognizing and acknowledging the importance of first responder emergency personnel to the quality of life in the city of Waschugul. Whereas the city of Waschugul's first responders, police officers, firefighters, paramedics, and volunteers in those programs are charged with heavy responsibility for public health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city of Waschugul, and whereas the city of Waschugul first responders work daily to protect our citizens from potential harm and threat, and treat those who have been injured or suffered health emergencies, all of which entails significant personal risk, and whereas the city of Waschugul's first responders maintain high standards of qualifications and performance through frequent and intensive training, and whereas as we approach the 11th anniversary of 9/11, we are mindful of the many sacrifices the first responders made in the protection of fellow citizens. Now therefore, be resolved by the city council for the city of Waschugul, Washington, as follows, that the city council hereby recognizes and commends the service of our first responders, not only as that of faithful employees and volunteers, but also the exemplary conduct to be admired and emulated by the citizens of the city of Waschugul. And with the approaching 11-year anniversary of the 9/11 attack on the World Trade Center and other affected targets, council recognizes this is an appropriate time to recognize the work of first responders and the sacrifices they and their families are called upon to make to safeguard their citizens, fellow citizens.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Second. I've got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. Any counsel discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That brings us back to our second opportunity for any members of the public that would like to make comment to the council.
Is this an open comment now?
It is.
Okay, well, I just simply to myself, William Davis. What I'm about to talk about is an area down here along Shepherd Road, you guys, well, city, I suppose, you put parking signs up, no parking signs along the riverside there. There's a bunch of us here in the community that fish along there all the time. I paid $30 for my, for the pass upriver, so I could park along the river. I paid $10 to Fish and Wildlife to park along the river down here, you know, signify parking passes, you know, on our vehicles. And we have a tremendous amount of people from out of the state, from Oregon, that come over here, and a lot of residents from Vancouver and the surrounding areas that use Waschugul, the swimming. And my idea is, and when you put them parking signs down there, you took away a valuable area for us, some of us disabled vets and other handicapped people in this community that fish right along the road there, and we park our vehicles there for a reason. We park them in the swimming area, people slam their doors into your car, you know. I had an $80 dent in my car and paint job, and by the time it got done, you know, it was a tap on my insurance, but, and I like to keep my car in good shape, and I like to be where my shocks are, because I'm a diabetic, it's supposed to all the other stuff that I'm taking, you know, I'm a diabetic too. So I take surround shots, you know, and I need to be near my stuff, I can't carry it because I have a hard time getting down the bank, I have a person usually with me, you know, that helps me land my fish and whatever. But what I'm saying is that you guys want a lot of revenue, you need to go out and put somebody over there, and not just there, but any place within the Waschugul area, you know, because we bought all them permits, you know, from the state and from Fish and Wildlife, so we could fish this river on a daily basis. I spend better than 300 days a year at that river. You know, I feed my family with that river, I feed my, all my neighbors with that river. You know, I give it to the Bank of America, you know, I take smoked fish to them all the time, and anybody else that would like it. I don't charge them anything for it, because I have a natural ability to catch fish. My dad brought me up on this river, and you know, that's one of my favorite spots, but I can't park my car up there in that parking thing, I can't walk down there, it's just too far for me. And you know, I just would like to see something different done, maybe, you know, you don't have to hire somebody, I know half a dozen people in this town that'd be perfect monitors, they go around and mug their, you know, write down their license plate number, give them a warning. You know, I'd like to see Waschugul stand up for the fishermen and all those residents around here that do that, besides, you know, I mean, if they went up the river here, and you know, we're considered Waschugul all the way up there to the salmon hatchery, you know, everybody's address is Waschugul. Why can't our police force or somebody in that caliber go around and write them tickets? I mean, it's, the fine for the yellow ticket, which is a $10 ticket, you know, and you can buy it in any of the places where the licenses are sold, you know, for vehicles. And people don't even have to go fishing, can buy that pass for 10 bucks. That way it protects their vehicle, and it helps enhance our, all the bathrooms along the community, they'll pay the fees and all that stuff, and help everybody out in the long run. You know, it's just, I've been sitting back for a long time watching, you guys are really good up here, I, you know, I always praise how you guys run these meetings, because it's just the way I like to see it. You know, you guys think about everything, and that's great. But you know, as I know that some stuff you don't see, and this one area there, you know, a lot of fishermen have complained that, you know, we can't, how are we going to stop and chase the salmon there? You know, because salmon are moving upriver, and there's not very many areas for us handicaps that have the opportunity to get down the bank. There's a lot of areas upriver I can't go, I just stay away from there. My whole river's down here, you know, where it's close to town, and if something happened, I could get help with my cellphone, because my cellphone don't work, I go around that corner over there, that first one, you go up the canyon over there on the river road, I'm done. You know, I mean, unless I'm up on a hill somewhere or somebody's got a cellphone, you know, I'm done. And you know, I'm just, you know, I'm willing to spend, I'd spend six hours a day to help you guys out if you wanted somebody to give tickets. I mean, I'm just, I feel obligated to the community to help out in some way, you know. I, for years, before I moved back to Waschugul, I was in Vancouver teaching, I had a school called the Fishing Class, and I taught kids how to fish. I didn't charge them nothing, because I knew they couldn't afford it. You know, it's made rods, I built my own rods, I'm a really good rod builder, and I've helped them out for years, and that's where I'm at today, you know. You know, if, I want to see it happen here too, you know. Get a lot of people off the streets that are fishing, you know, there's a lot of good things going on in this community. This community's got one of the beautifullest rivers anywhere in the United States, and these swimmers are destroying it with all their trash, their beer bottles in the river. You know, we know we have an ordinance on the Waschugul River, it's no beer drinking. And you know, I go down there and I pick up 500 beer cans, or I find beer bottles broken down there, and we sit hours picking the glass up, and it seems like every time it comes down, it's a fisherman's fault, and it's not. It's all these swimmers that come from out of state. And if you've ever taken a ride up there, and you can go all the way to the 44 Road, that's past Dugan Falls to the right and up the hill, you won't believe how much they have tore that place up back there. It used to be wonderful hunting, and it's not anymore. It's now the, so many sheriff's departments patrolling that on a daily basis and checking people out for beer, you know, beer cans, beer bottles, and whatever else they're dragging down there, but it's miserable. I mean, when I grew up, Dugan Falls was really a pretty place to go and bring your family and your kids and enjoy a really nice day. You can't do that no more. You can't park a car along the road down there, because I left my car at 14 mile a few years ago, and they broke every window out of my car, took my stereo, took all my tires, took whatever they could off my motor, and I was out the glass, you know, I was done. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anyone else that would like to address counsel? Okay, I have three items for you this evening. One is an update. Last week, we mentioned the Hathaway Boat Ramp ribbon cutting and rededication on September 29th. The time of that has now been set for 11:00 AM. Certainly ask that any members of counsel that are available that morning join us down in the park. A reminder again next week for the September 11th 9/11 ceremony over in front of Camas City Hall, 8 o'clock in the morning. There is a breakfast following, and the fire department is asking, they're hosting the breakfast, but they'd just like to know how many people might be attending, so they've got enough. And then my final item is tomorrow evening, we have a bonfire plan for the school district, kind of an old-fashioned rally and bonfire down the old Hamilton mill site. Pardon?
They're not going to burn books, are they?
I don't think so. No, I'm pretty sure we didn't see any books down there.
They've got tires, haven't they?
Nope, no, there are no tires. We even pulled out the Creosote. But that will start up around the 8 o'clock area, I think we're planning to light the fire around the 8:30 area once our volunteers are all finished with their training duties for that night and can come down that way as well, so.
What time is that again?
Arrived before 8:30, if you want to see the start of the fire. Kind of like Burning Man, but not.
And where is that again?
Down the old Hamilton mill site, right next to Wesley Motors. There is some parking on the mill site itself, and then the rest of the parking will be over towards the Port Marina parking area. And certainly a thank you to our Public Works Department and the Fire Department for helping prepping everything for tomorrow and keeping us all safe as we go as well. Items from council members. Joyce?
Well, I just wanted to say that I was going to, I went down and saw the Hathaway Boat Launch Ramp today, and it's really nice what they're doing down there on the water. And there was a man that had just caught a fish about that big down off that, which was interesting to see, so I'm looking forward to the ceremony.
Excellent. Paul?
I just wanted to mention, there's a woman who passed away by the name of Flossie Waeger, who was Citizen of the Year in Vancouver. She's a great champion of parks over many, many years, and there will be a wake and celebration of her life on Sunday from 1 until 6 at the Evergreen Arboretum, which is in Vancouver. I plan to go.
That's all. Rick?
I just enjoyed seeing a number of us at the debate between Attorney General Rob McKenna and former Congressman Jay Inslee, and I thought it was a good debate, they didn't talk enough about local government.
Other items? Okay, if there is nothing more, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion carries.
I regret that I missed both celebrations on 9/11. Work in the morning and C-TRAN. C-TRAN is that Tuesday night. They should postpone. Should just cancel it.